My friends in New York say hello, my friends in LA they don't know.
Once before, we'll try it again. Calling the meeting to order. We already had the pledge. Now we can continue with the presentation.
We can, let's try the pledge. We didn't do the pledge. We did the Star Spangled Banner. So would you please stamp and remove your hats?
Flag up here.
And the flag is where it should be, and we're ready. Here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It really is my pleasure to introduce to you Raul Yau. They are an acapella group here at Howe High School, one of our many music groups. They are really flying solo tonight because unfortunately, their director is quite under the weather. Apparently, there's a lot of illness going around. But they're doing a great job. And would you like to introduce your next piece?
Yeah, I'm gonna have Gina and Joe take over. Hi, everyone, I'm Gina Raviato, and I'm a senior member of W.O.
I'm Joe Barrera, I'm also a senior member.
As Ms. Derby said, we're an acapella singing group led by Joe Cantapa, who unfortunately can't be here tonight due to, well, he's actually really sick. But we decided we pulled it all together ourselves, and the show must go on.
Well, our second song we're gonna be singing is "Good Life." It's by OneRepublic. I want to take a moment to thank the board for letting us be here tonight, Ms. Derby for inviting us to be here. And I'd like to thank Mr. Bruno personally for helping take care of us while Top's not here. So here's "Good Life."
And thank everyone for coming out and all the faculty here tonight, and especially the E.T. kids who are doing all the Microsofts.
Hopelessly, I feel like there might be something that I'll miss. Hopelessly, I feel like the window closes so quick. Hopelessly, I'm taking a mental picture of you now. Hopelessly, the hope that we have so much to be done now. Oh, 'cause it's gotta be a good life. It's gotta be a good life. It's gotta be a good life. Good life. Say oh, there's still nothing to care about. The city is on fire now. It's gotta be a good life. Good, good life. It's gotta be a good life. It's gotta be a good life. It's gotta be a good life. Good life. Say oh, there's still nothing to care about. The city is on fire now. It's gotta be a good life. A good, good life. It's gotta be a good life. It's gotta be a good life. It's gotta be a good life. Good life. Say oh, there's still nothing to care about. The city is on fire now. It's gotta be a good life. Oh, 'cause it's gotta be a good life. It's gotta be a good life. It's gotta be a good life. Good life. Say oh, there's still nothing to care about. The city is on fire now. It's gotta be a good life. Good, good life.
Okay, pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Clause of 1975, this meeting has been duly advertised into our press. Issue October 13th, 2011. All municipal clerks and townships and boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified and requirements of posting the notices have been met. Can we have a motion for the pool of minutes?
Oh, second.
Discussion. Seeing none, Mr. Poise.
Mr. Acetola.
Yes.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Mrs. Canario.
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin.
Yes.
Mr. Messinger.
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera.
Yes.
Mr. Mazik.
Yes.
Mr. Moses.
Yes.
Okay, next we have reports, superintendent's report.
We're gonna open up this evening. We have several presentations this evening, and I will open it up by turning it over to Mrs. Derby for the CERT recognition.
Thank you very much for this wonderful opportunity. It's almost six years ago, Mr. Robinson and I were in the first CERT graduating class, and it was our first class here at Howe High School. CERT is Community Emergency Response Team, and the coordinator for Howe Township and Farmingdale is Mr. Ron Sannasak. Ron is also, wears an education hat, but I like to tell them about that. He is the Assistant Superintendent at Howe Township Schools as well. So he wears many hats. And we are always so grateful, and taking a class with Ron is always a pleasure. And also, our technology education teacher here, Sherry Roses, who was a former Howe Township Board Member, also got very involved with the program as well. We have included students as well as teachers. However, this year's graduating class is a faculty graduating class. We will be opening it up to the students again. So Ron and Sherry.
Thank you, Ms. Derby. As Ms. Derby said, this is the, one of the most active CERT programs. We have quite a few in the township. We also have them in the elementary schools. But this is the fifth class that Mrs. Roses has been kind enough to facilitate, babysit, and several other things. And I'm very proud to say that a number of the graduates have gone on to be more involved in different OEM and emergency response capabilities. I was going to let you know that Ms. Derby was one of the distinguished graduates, but she let that cat out of the bag before I got up here. So I have a brief PowerPoint to show you, and then we will present the graduates, and we will present them with this fine bag of response stuff. It's got a hard hat and a tool in there for turning off gas meters, gloves and goggles, and a flashlight, and a couple other things to use that they learned. And it's all, this is a no-cost program. It's all funded through FEMA, and it is documented through FEMA, up through the national, through the state police. So I'd like to thank the board for allowing us to present here. I'd like to thank Ms. Derby for hosting so many classes and being so proactive, and thank the entire faculty and all those who have gone through the program. CERT is a training program that teaches people to respond and take care of themselves, their community, and neighbors. It is a program that began with the first President Bush and one of his Citizen Corps programs, along with volunteers and police, and community watch, and those. And it is a very viable and valuable program. I had more slides, but I was told eight was my limit, so I'm trying to go through them quick here. Course overview, it is eight weeks, 20 hours of instruction. It includes disaster preparedness and overview. Fire supre-, disaster fire suppression, taught by a gentleman who's an instructor from Monmouth County Fire Academy, Bosco, Frank Boscianzik. So if your name was that, you'd be Bosco too. Disaster medical operations. It's three N for, it's a very big module. It's taught by one of the finest EMTs in Monmouth County. I have to say that, this is my wife.
This is Dave.
Thank you, dear. The light surgeon rescue is taught by one of Howe's finest, Paul Mazzio. He's also on the Task Force One team for the state, so it's a very good instructor. We bring quite a bit of knowledge to the classes. Disaster psychology and team organization. Although it doesn't sound like one of the more thrilling ones, it's actually a very important one. Teaching responders to be safe, watch out for themselves, worry about their well-being and their mental well-being in a disaster. It's something that we don't think about a lot, but it's very important. Terrorism is taught by one of the finest of Howe's finest, Captain Jeff Mayfield, who is also part of the MOSCERT team. And that, for those of you who know the old acronym better, that was the SWAT team. And then the last one is probably the one that everybody talks about the most, and that's the final drill and exercise. And I have to say that this class cheated a little bit because they had some people refreshing and going back through, so they knew some of my tricks. So when we went through the drill, they had a little insight in what they were supposed to do. So they didn't make hardly any mistakes. Most teams, we use the drill as a learning experience, and as Mr. Robinson can tell you, they make mistakes. So we have a few, what lights is it? The planning and preparedness. You can see that the students in the background are actually members of the PAL team and the high school team that were trained as Team CERTs. And we have command, and of course, you have to have control. Then inside, there was, scene size up. You have to assess what you're going to encounter and how you're going to deal with it. This is one of the students pretending to be trapped under the desk. The sign, if you can't read it, it says, "This is heavy." That's supposed to be a hint for the team to not do anything wrong. And then response, you can see that they're starting to respond, lifting it off, putting something under it so it doesn't fall on her again. And then teamwork. And if you can see the table in the bottom, improvising for what's around. They're using the table as a backboard and a stretcher to get the patient out. And then recovery. Recovery, as we sit here in the wake of Hurricane Irene, recovery is an important phase of emergency response. For those of you who don't know, we were hit fairly hard. Not as hard as some of the North Jersey counties, but we had 14 houses that were destroyed, and people were, many are still displaced from their homes. A number of the CERT members responded to that and a number of other disasters in town. And then mitigation. And mitigation is where you discuss what you're going to do to keep it from happening again. That is my eight-slide presentation. I would like to thank you. Thanks for coming out, and I invite you to visit the website. And if you have any interest in joining, we have classes occasionally. The Monmouth County OEM is very supportive, and we can provide classes for any group, school, PTA, or social group, if you're interested in a private class. It's all no charge, and it is a very valuable lesson. Mrs. Roses will read the names and announce the graduates. They will give their bag.
It was such an honor to work with this group of professionals, my friends, my colleagues. What you do for the school is wonderful. Your dedication, as well as what you do for our community. So thank you. First person, graduate, John Vow. Tammy D. Lucas. Robert Coons. Richard Morgan. Gigi Papanicolas. Cindy Popiel. Will Sierra. Kathy Taller. Rich Euro. Thank you.
I have one more certificate, and a certificate really isn't enough. Mrs. Roses, I get used to saying that. Sherry Roses has been a wonderful supporter of this program. She has volunteered her time, her resources, her phone calls, and her organization to make sure that all five of the classes that she shepherded through were very successful and are active members of the CERT team. In addition, she has been a huge help to the Howe and Farmingdale OEM. During the Christmas blizzard, she spent about 48 hours in the Emergency Operations Center. She came out in snow that was probably far deeper than she thought it was, dug her way to the trunk that was picking her up. She responded during the hurricane. She has been, I haven't asked her a test yet, that she hasn't graciously performed. And between her involvement with the children and providing, giving them the lesson in civics and how to be a volunteer in a community, and her being a volunteer herself, she is a very, very valuable part of, I'm sure, the high school here in Howe, as well as the community. And I just need to recognize Sherry Roses. Thank you. Thank you to the board, thank you to Mrs. Derby, and thank you to the Howe community.
Thanks, Ron.
Good evening, folks. First off, thank you, Ron, thank you, Sherry. That's a terrific accomplishment. And when we were hosting, when we do that, Howe would host this meeting, Ms. Derby thought it would be very appropriate to recognize those faculty and members from Howe community for that accomplishment. Terrific idea, Ms. Derby. So we come to what is now the semi-annual Violence, Vandalism, and Substance Abuse Report, as required as a public school district in the state of New Jersey. Traditionally, this report is delivered each fall during the school year, and it reflects last year's data around a number of areas related to violence, vandalism, and substance abuse. Most of you are probably familiar with the new HIV legislation that was passed in the state of New Jersey this past year. What that, that also changed our reporting requirements. So we have very specific criteria on which to report out on. In the prior to January 1 of each school year, the superintendent of schools is required to report last year's data around these items, which I'll go through momentarily. And prior to June 30 of that same school year, the superintendent is required to report out on the first half of the year of that current year data, as well as speak to the preventative programs and items of that nature that are within the school district to mitigate this type of behavior within the school system. The way we have worked out the presentation here for the Freehold Regional High School District is that this evening is going to be a very straightforward presentation of the data with a few brief talking points. And then in the spring, we will have several administrators back, and they will do a much more extensive presentation on the myriad of preventative programs, student groups and organizations, community outreach initiatives, and so on, that help to create a climate and a culture in the Freehold Regional High School District that I think counters such behavior. This is always a tricky report to give in the sense that you get a snapshot of particular items with, in the absence of a lot of background information. So it's a little difficult to understand at times. What I would say is that over the past three years, and you'll see some comparisons from the past two years, and then on the final slides has a three-year snapshot. Over the past three years, our issues, our incidents of violence, vandalism, and substance abuse have remained relatively stable. 2008, 2009, we had approximately 260 unduplicated issues throughout the school district. In 2009, 10, we had approximately 214, so a dip. And then last year, we had approximately 249. You can see that while they fix it, that's fine. What you see is our student enrollment relatively stable, a slight uptick of approximately 200 students. Our issues of violence increased from 108 to 122. Vandalism is 53 to 22, leaveners from 8 to 11. Substance abuse, to me, which is becoming more and more difficult in the high school setting in particular with the availability of various drugs and the use of technology, the internet, text messaging, where individuals can communicate with each other very, very quickly, makes it very difficult to counter that. And I think every high school, any high school in the state and the nation who says that there are no issues of substance abuse and no difficulties here, they're lying to themselves because it's something that we face on a daily basis. And I do think we do a terrific job here of countering such incidents. And there's subcategories within this, which I'll go through momentarily. I think it's important to note that with the passage of the HIV legislation and the resulting reporting, which is the most stringent anti-bullying legislation in the nation, what you are most likely going to see in subsequent years is a continual increase in the reporting of these issues. That's not to say they weren't reported previously, but with the heightened lens through which all these items are viewed, it's obviously natural that more things are going to be overturned in the course of investigative work from our administrative team. So violence. All of you can read this presentation, so I'm not going to read it to you other than to say that, you know, there's a slight uptick in some of those incidents, and there's, you know, it's, it's there's approximately 25 additional incidents in a student population of around 12,000. I don't know what the statistical relevance of that is other than there's a slight increase. Vandalism. I will note that the seven incidents of damage to property last year here at the Freehold Regional High School District, none of those incidents rose to the threshold of actually recovering some sort of compensation from the folks who engaged in that vandalism. We had our share of several biased remarks, things that were scribbled on desks, walls, things of that nature. We did have one bomb threat last year, which is, which at the time was scrawled onto a desk. Weapons. To put this in perspective, a weapon is anything that might be determined lethal in nature within the schoolhouse. To give you an example, our assault with a weapon in 2010, 2011, we had three of those. Two of them were pins that students had on them and jabbed another student with. And one of those was a pair of scissors that a student grabbed in class and used in a heated argument with another student. None of them, none of those assaults resulted in any significant injury to any of our students. Substance abuse speaks for itself, and this is something that is really an unfortunate reality. We do have, when we have students who are experiencing difficulty in school, we often find that there may be an underlying substance abuse issue there. It may stem from the home, it may stem from just a student making poor decisions. But it is something that we certainly take seriously here. We do have a SAC in each building to counter these sorts of things, to counsel students, to offer run programs for students who are experiencing those issues. And I think that our SACs as a whole really do a wonderful job of meeting on a monthly basis and making sure that all six high schools are functioning in a similar manner to combat these sorts of things. This is just a snapshot of the types of illegal substances used. It's an unfortunate reality. You can read it for yourselves, marijuana, alcohol, amphetamines. Again, these things are much more prevalent in schools today. The drug of choice that's certainly emerging in our area is easily accessible heroin. So this is, you know, so much more heavy-duty material than we may have been used to in the schoolhouse ourselves. And this is just a three-year snapshot. And again, it shows a relatively flat-minded number of incidents. So 2008, 2009, we had more incidents than 2010, 2011, but there's a dip in '09, '10. It just spells that out by month. And like I said, in the spring, we will present a detailed overview of our various programs, but this is just a smattering of some of the things that we do here in the school district to help create a climate that works against these issues. I can tell you that our best defense in all- I can tell you that our best defense in all this are our own kids, our own students, the peer leadership, the many towners. Those kids in all of our schools, you know, the Students Against Disruptive Decisions, they're the front line, who are on a daily basis doing a lot of incredible work within our schools, reaching out to other students who may be experiencing difficulty. One of the things that I've gotten a firsthand glimpse of are meeting with a number of these students who run these clubs. And it's something that they take very, very seriously. And there's power in a student helping a student through an issue. Sometimes that comes through a little bit more than an adult to a student. And I think that with 12,000 students, we have fewer than 250 incidents in a school year. And I would argue that the overwhelming majority of our students are actually actively working against this type of behavior on a daily basis and creating the culture in our schools that where this sort of behavior is unacceptable. I do, I do believe that these are issues that we're always going to be grappling with. I think it's more about how we engage our students from the day they walk through our doors as ninth graders and create that environment where they feel safe, where they are able to be guided to make more healthy choices, better decisions, and that we do that as a collaborative effort between our staff and our students and the various programs we have. And I think that the school district as a whole, in each building, and the leadership in the buildings recognize that. And I think that we do a terrific job of reaching students where they are. And I look forward to the presentation in the spring. And now I will call up the language arts supervisors, who've sat here patiently because they were supposed to go next. I want to follow these ladies. And Greg, I'm sorry, Mr. Turin. I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. I'd just like to begin by saying that watching the students who came in the acapella group at the beginning and listening to them, and watching their faces and their enthusiasm, just really, I think, is so uplifting and invigorating because that's why we're here. And watching them just brought me, and I think I speak for all of us, just makes us feel so enthusiastic about speaking with you this evening. This is why we're here, just to see their faces, to listen to their voices, and to see their enthusiasm. We are very pleased and excited to be here this evening in order to share and showcase our English programs in our district. And as you can see, the district mission, we advance the district's missions and goals of developing and nurturing self-directed lifelong learners. Being here as English supervisors, we of course recognize and applaud all the disciplines since we're involved with them. But we like to share with you that we do have a sense that English is the portal to everything. First, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Jane Goldstein. I'm the English supervisor at Marlborough High School, also the art and family and consumer science supervisor. And I'd like to allow you to meet the rest of the supervisors in the district.
Hi, my name is Judy Legann, and I am the art, English, and music supervisor at Freehold Borough High School.
Hello, Stephanie McMinister. I do have to say I am a Marlborough High School graduate as well. I am the English and Health and Physical Education Supervisor at Freehold Township High School.
I'm Greg Turin. I am the English and Fine Art Supervisor at How High School. And tonight, I am the technology person, so any problems, I don't want to hear about.
Good evening. I'm Melissa Benudo, and I'm the English and Business Supervisor at Benal High School.
In addition, Tanisha Douglas is the English and ELL, art and music supervisor at Coltsnick High School. And unfortunately, she too was hit by the blue bug and is unable to be with us this evening. Four years of English is a high school graduation requirement. But of course, that's not the way we see it. We see our students in ninth grade embarking upon a journey with us. And that journey goes from ninth to 10th through 11th and 12th grade. I'm sure you can think back at all of those characters and all of those situations and all of the dilemmas, all of the conflicts, all of the decisions that you made that really might come back to some of those characters who you met when you were in high school. And I think each of us carries some of them with us all the time. And that's really just a part, but an important part of what we do in the classrooms. Our classrooms are exciting places to be. We embrace our students and we welcome them each and every day that school is in session. Our classrooms are alive, and they're alive with activities where our students think, they explore, they learn, they create, they collaborate, and they perform. And it's really part of our mission with them. We accomplish it through fiction, through nonfiction, through poetry, through prose, through research, through all the skills that we embrace, and through writing. Our ninth grade students in English I, we call it a survey and introduction to literature and everything else that we explore. And in these classrooms, in addition to all of these skills and the writing that we do, our students meet Odysseus for the first time, many of them epic poetry and heroes. They also meet Atticus. They meet Scamp and Jem in To Kill a Mockingbird and all of the beautiful values that these characters portray to us. A separate piece, Fahrenheit 451, and of course Romeo and Juliet, who speak to them as well. Our English II curriculum embraces American literature. And through American literature and all of the genres that are studied, the myriad of characters include John Proctor in The Crucible, Holden Caulfield. Should I pause now? Come on, everybody. Because Holden just brings out so many emotions in so many people. And if we took the time, which we're not, nobody's calling behind it, but if we took the time to go around right now, you may raise your hand, Mr. Durbin. If we took the time, there's just so many emotions. Those who love Holden, those who see him as heroic, you know, those who see him as, are you kidding me? All right? So Holden comes to our sophomores of mice and men, Lenny and George, the spirit of that time period and all that the students learn. The Great Gatsby, Jay Gatsby and Steinbeck. I see many of you shaking your heads. I'm really excited. Shakespeare for that year is Julius Caesar. Brutus, Julius Caesar, all of that. In English III, we embrace British literature. And all of our themes and all of our characters and all of the myriad that goes on starts to really come together at this point. A lot of the works in the British literature curriculum speak of good and evil. Now, isn't that something that we all talk about? So you're probably now thinking, what a relevant curriculum. What a relevant purpose that we have for our students. They meet Beowulf, and they say, aha, I remember those characteristics of epic poetry and hero. Canterbury Tales, which also presented all of those characters and an overview of his time period and the good people and the not-so-good people in every area, walk of life, and every profession, and those who choose good and those who choose not-so-good and those who choose evil. Macbeth, a good guy made a lot of bad choices. Gee, have we heard of that before? And really, our students really respond so excited, so well, to all of this. 1984, remember Winston Smith? And remember when you could say to kids, "Big brother is watching you", and everybody knew just what you meant? And that's what we hope to happen. Lord of the Flies, Ralph Piggy, the island. And what children can do even to each other when left to their own devices. Dr. Jetl and Mr. Hyde, Frankenstein, et cetera, et cetera. I really could go on and on, but it's a sampling. As seniors, our students study classic and modern literature. And please remember, I'm just talking about the literature. Our skills, our writing, our research, fiction, nonfiction, instructional texts are all there. We have a literature-based curriculum with a very strong writing component. Oedipus, senior year, fate, et cetera. Hamlet, The Young Prince. They study a unit of which night is the cornerstone, and they look at man's inhumanity to man. One flew over the cuckoo's nest, remember Mac Murphy? Death of a salesman or glass menagerie, no exit, stranger metamorphosis for Sid Orthon. So as I stand here, I'm feeling excited about it and about going back into the classroom tomorrow and just going over it with the kids. But it's a very, very exciting program. And I've really only gone over the core of the program with you. There are so many other titles. There are so many other informational texts, fiction and nonfiction-based, and again, all the other components, which my colleagues will go over with you. Thank you.
I'm here to speak with you tonight about our AP offerings. Currently, we offer two AP electives, grade 11 AP Literature and Composition, and in 12th grade, AP Language and Composition. What's really, I find, most interesting about the entire AP setup is that when most students come into the high school as even ninth graders, very often, we are asked questions. What do I need to do to make sure my child gets into a good college? Does my child have the correct skills ready to be successful? And one of the things that most definitely is proposed as an opportunity to our students is the AP setup. AP, I'll start first with the AP Language and Composition course. Students who take this course have to have really a desire to broaden the spectrum of how they learn, kind of a willingness or even a fearlessness in approaching learning. Because for many of the students, they may hit a few bumps at around the bend as they start to explore at often very deep levels some works of primarily nonfiction that they may really be interested in because our topics in AP Language and Comp range from education, politics, science and government, nature, gender, all types of issues that may or may not interest the students. So some of our students have to get past the, am I interested in the topic or not approach when they approach the reading in class. The next aspect is that many of our students are, will be dealing with pieces that are rigorous and are definitely a bit more challenging than what they might have been accustomed to in honors or in academic-level class. And part of this, again, is because AP Advanced Placement is really designed to provide students with college-level experiences in some ways, where we have an eye out, knowing that they one day will go to a college and hopefully be successful. So when I mention the fearlessness again, it's working with students and helping them when they hit maybe a roadblock, when they realize that perhaps the study skills that they had applied as freshmen and sophomores and maybe did very well during those years may or may not be working just as well in their AP class. And that's a great learning opportunity because we see it as opportunity to help them tweak their approach to the literature and to writing. The subject areas alone require that students are creative, analytical, and really have to be somewhat open-minded. The grade 11 AP course really asks students to explore what a writer says, but actually how they say it. And why did that writer select a certain word choice? Why did they string words together in the manner that they did? Do you notice the style, the tone? Is it consistent? And more importantly, is it consistent? Does it work for the purpose of the material that they're reading? In junior year, we don't put so much emphasis, as we may have in the earlier years, on the comprehension of material or the basics. Do you get the theme? Do you get the plotline? Are you getting the characters? We try to go beyond that. And again, for many students, that's a bit of a challenge. So one of the things that so many of the AP teachers and the supervisors are accustomed to doing, especially early in the year, is sometimes hand-holding a little bit with certain students who, again, may feel like, oh, I can't do this, not realizing that when they get into that great college one day, they're going to be dealing with rigorous courses, and they're going to have to tweak their study skills and abilities accordingly. So what's always lovely to see, and you can almost chart it on a calendar, is how by the end of first semester, the students who were struggling a bit, and make no mistake, when I say struggling, I'm not talking necessarily about people failing courses. I'm talking about students who are traditionally accustomed to getting As and Bs with maybe, you know, some effort, but not really maybe bringing it 1,000%. Whereas all of a sudden in an AP class, things are a little different, the ante's been upped, and what they did before is not working as much. So it's a whole learning process. It's really lovely to see how in the spring, usually, when so many things are beginning, metaphorically speaking, so many of our students come into their own, and they start to realize, okay, all right, I get that. Every paper I write may not always be fantastic. I've had to tweak my writing style to suit the expectations that the teacher knows to be true based on the teacher's expectations as well as the expectations brought down by the college board. So it's a whole, again, learning experience. The 11th grade course really sets the tone for what a student may find as they go on their senior year in the AP program. The AP Literature and Comp has a very different approach because in that course, students are really delving into the literature, trying to get a sense of deeper understanding of the piece, questioning things about theme, metaphor, characterization, larger world issues. And what can also be frightening for them, and I like to mention these things like fearlessness and frightening because I think part of learning is also recognizing that not everything's a smooth walk. Sometimes you have to hit some difficulties and deal with it to go on to the next level. So in the 12th grade AP course, they're learning, and it is scary for them that sometimes literature presents you with questions that don't have responses. Maybe there's not one good answer to a question that's raised in a piece about Hamlet or Oedipus or any one of the many novels or poems that come across the AP students' desks or experiences. So that's rather the fun of it. What is interesting, too, is that AP students, for the most part, in addition to the skills, and skills, of course, can always be developed, but there should be some type of interest or passion. And what is always exciting for the AP teachers to see is how some students who come into the class as either juniors or seniors and maybe have a preconceived idea of what type of material they're interested in are usually in for a lovely surprise when they come across writers and works of fiction and nonfiction that maybe they kind of brushed off initially or didn't think would appeal to them. And by the end of the school year, they're chatting with you about how, you know, they have really discovered something really meaningful and personal in Sid Orthon or in a certain work of Hamlet, where at the beginning of the year, they just were not really that keen to it. The beautiful part also about the AP courses is that if a child learns the skills of critical writing, thinking, reading, and how to be analytical as well as creative. Because we also stress that in both AP classes because, as we all know, in college or higher-level learning, part of producing a top paper is being able to look at a literary work and come up with an original idea of your own. To be able to look at something, delve in, and say, you know what, I don't know if I agree with what my teacher says or what the critic says, I see it kind of differently. And do you have the courage and the skills to communicate that new idea? And so that's just part of what we hope to experience, to get across the experience for AP. The other electives in English, I think, are just fantastic. I mean, I am the art, English, and music supervisor, but I also think that the electives that we offer are really just crucial for people to be successful in all areas of life. I mean, let's face it, we offer Drama I or Drama and Advanced Drama. Here I am, speaking in front of a group. We all have opportunities to speak in front of our families, perhaps, We all have opportunities to speak in front of our families, perhaps, if we're gathering for a holiday, or if we're talking to a boss, or who knows what things life throws at us. But having the confidence that's gleaned in the drama class can definitely help that. Plus, a little background in drama history never killed anybody. It adds to your appreciation when you go to see a show, whether it's common local theater or a Broadway show. The arts really are not going away. I mean, we saw tonight, when the student performers were on stage, people were smiling. They were into it. And with the arts electives that we offer in English, we kind of touch that aspect as well. I think also with the electives that we offer, creative writing, advanced creative writing, journalism, to name a few, those are also classes that are geared towards all types of students. I mean, make no mistake about it, drama classes, creative writing classes, journalism classes are just not filled with the artsy kids. You've got students who have voices, who are proficient and stellar in mathematics and science, who are going to go out into the world and, you know, really make an impact because of their voice, their style, and perhaps what they picked up from a few electives. I think that one of the most important jobs that we do in the English department in regard to our creative electives by offering them to students is by reminding them that, yes, every single person is creative. We may be creative in different ways. Some of us could sing. I only sing in the shower. But we all have that vein, and we may just show it in different ways. But a creative elective, again, reminds students that they have a voice and they have that ability. And that's why we're really thrilled with the creative writing, the drama, the journalism pieces that we offer. Academic Support Instruction is another skills-based course where we stress to students who may be struggling with HESPA-based skills that they really need to be clear about the purpose of the class. This class in no way reflects anyone's intelligence. It's purely a skills-based class. So if you are interested in playing golf, let's say, some people come to it naturally. Some people take years of lessons, and they're still not fantastic, but they can get by. The same thing holds true with writing and reading skills. You know, there are those of us that are gifted in writing and reading, and it's effortless to do that. But very often, if you've ever sat in an ASI class with some of our students who struggle with writing and reading, there are children who are pained when they're asked to write an essay. It's a real effort for some of them. And part of the job in the ASI class is teaching skills to help them manage to at least get by, and in terms of getting by here means passing the New Jersey HESPA. The Academic Support Instruction classes are offered grades nine through 10, grade 11, and then for the seniors who are needing to take the HESPA for the third time. And with that, that concludes my overview of the electives. Thank you. Let Jane and Judy just explain. We have literature-based courses, and this literature is the portal into the skills that we need to develop in our students. Because these are skills they're going to take with them into their math classes to read and understand open-ended questions, to plot the essential information, to construct a well-developed lab report, to deal with a history DBQ. So all those skills really come back into the English classroom, whereas students may not enjoy reading Hamlet or Oedipus or The Odyssey, but that pains us, pains us greatly, especially with The Odyssey for me. We are teaching them these important reading and writing skills. You know, we teach students, and my former students in the audience can attest to this right now, that we teach them reading as an active skill. It's not something that you just simply passively do there, that we teach them how to preview a text, how to make predictions, how to constantly question the text, the author, the purpose. So even though they may not be writing or speaking with anyone, they're still engaging with text, and it's participatory, two-way conversation with literature. In terms of writing, we teach them that writing is not, or we try to teach them writing is not painful, but it is a process. You don't just throw words on the paper and go, "That's it." You know, we, the English supervisors, spent many hours working on this presentation, crafting the right words, choosing the right order, that there is a process of pre-writing, of drafting, editing, revising, that final publishing piece. We integrate our grammar instruction so that we're no longer diagramming sentences, and some people remember that painfully. We use a Warner's Grammar Textbook and have to go through dry grammar drills, but rather it's integrated into our writing instruction, so it's more hands-on and applicable to what they are writing for their classes. And in ninth grade, we start them immediately with research skills, how to sort through print and digital media, how to use them ethically so that they do not plagiarize, and what exactly constitutes plagiarism, which is so much easier now in the age of Wikipedia and cutting and pasting. We teach them how to use the primary sources of literature, how to go and find credible secondary sources of literary criticism and historical research, how to construct and what the difference is between a bibliography and a work cited page, building them up for that all-important research paper in junior and senior year. So many of our students come back to us and tell us how well-compared they were for college, that if it wasn't for Ms. Manzour's 11th grade research paper or Ms. Wilson's senior research paper, they couldn't have handled their introduction courses in college, and they just felt such a breeze. In terms of curricular enrichment, we have several tools that have really been integrated throughout the district more and more each year. One of the ones that we've had great success with is Empower 3000. You might be familiar with the name, also Team Biz. It's a web-based tool that is a reading program. Students are tested for their lexile level, which is their reading ability, and then based on that reading ability, they are given nonfiction texts from the Associated Press. There are articles that my students read about Steve Jobs, about possibly the opening of schools during snow days online. They weren't too happy when they read that one. And it's given to them at their reading ability, because in our classes, even though we have honors in academic and regular-level classes, you still have mixed abilities within those classes. Not everyone was operating on the same level. This program gives students texts at the level they're at, so that they can have challenging vocabulary, challenging syntax, and still have the same content. Then afterwards, they have to answer some higher-order thinking questions that mimic the questions they're going to see on the HESPA, on the AP, on the SAT exams. What we piloted last year at Freel Township, and now we're using district-wide, is a program called My Access through Vantage Learning. It's another web-based program. This focuses on writing, and this allows students to get immediate feedback on their writing in terms of grammar, mechanics, focus, organization, and even content. The program will tell them if they're hitting all points. This does not replace a teacher. This is used formatively to give students feedback while they're crafting an essay, what may be weak in terms of their syntax, in terms of their diction, in terms of their organization. Excuse me. And this, like I said, also stresses the process of writing. It gives them all different tools for pre-writing and editing, showing the models of extremely strong papers as well as weaker ones, and explanations as to why they are stronger or weaker papers. So students have that constant feedback that they're not just getting 45 minutes through with their teacher, in his extent back at home. And then, we've been using for several years, we piloted this, maybe 10 years ago, turnitindotcom, which is a plagiarism website, which, again, is not just used as a tool, but it is an instructional weapon in our arsenal against academic dishonesty, so that we show students what exactly is plagiarism, how you avoid it, and this is our final check to make sure that they aren't just taking the easy way out and cutting and pasting. And of course, we also have individual remediation for students that are weaker. We have tutoring before school, after school, even during school for some of our students to help bring up those essential skills that they need in order to pass our state test junior or possibly senior year.
Okay, first, I'll apologize, because I have standards, and they're really dry. So I'm going to start by letting you know that in the recent years, studies have been conducted that show about one-third of students nationwide, when they enter college as freshmen, they are required to take remedial courses. And those courses do not allow them to receive credit, and for most students, it's just a lot of money out of their pocket. The Common Core standards were developed to make sure that students no longer have to take those courses, that they're prepared when they leave in June before they get to the door of whatever college they choose. In New Jersey, we adopted these standards in 2010, and we use them in conjunction with the New Jersey Core Curriculum Standards. The fundamental goal of these standards is to make sure that all students are held to high expectations regardless of the level that they are placed in. Across the district, more than 87% of our students pursue some form of higher education, which is why these standards are so crucial for our students. By aligning our curriculum and instructional strategies to the standards, our program seeks to ensure that all students are prepared for entry-level, credit-bearing, college coursework in English. And more importantly, these standards are internationally benchmarked, which in layman's terms simply means that our students can compete not only against their American peers, but against their peers worldwide. These standards are also different than what we used to work with, because they're vertically-aligned kindergarten through grade 12. The alignment helps to eliminate the gaps that students may face as they progress from grade to grade, especially in a district like this, where we have students coming from multiple sending districts. It's very important that everyone be on the same page throughout their high school career. So these standards help to keep the students in line, grades nine through 12, and to eliminate those gaps. We also emphasize nonfiction material, and we've increased text complexity. The district program is working to bridge the gap between what students know it can achieve in high school and what they are truly expected to know when they enter the doors of a college. And with these standards in mind, the English supervisors and teachers participate in ongoing curriculum and assessment revisions in order to expose our students to up-to-date resources and instructional strategies, both in and out of the classroom.
We've been focusing mostly on what we teach, and I'm going to really focus on how we teach. I don't know about you, but my high school experience, I have very vivid memories of walking into an English class and having my teacher sit behind a desk and talk for 45 minutes till the bell rang, and that was the end of class. And I loved it, because I love English. But I could imagine if someone didn't like English, that was a very boring 45-minute period to sit through, day after day after day. Those are what we would call teacher-centered classes, and they were lecture-based. We have actively, as supervisors, been moving towards changing that in our classrooms for several years and making the students more accountable for their learning. No longer do we have the teacher up there who is filling the students with knowledge, and now we have the students creating the knowledge for themselves. As Melissa just stated, the new content standards sort of are leaning towards that now anyway, so we feel we're sort of ahead of game a little bit, because we've already been doing these kind of things in our classes. Teachers are creating innovative lessons and activities where our students are creating, they're thinking, and they're producing on a daily basis. Teachers are becoming more facilitators that lead students to discover, rather than just tell them the right answer. Moreover, because of new technologies that are available, teachers have access to programs and equipment that gives them freedom and creativity to extend the lessons outside of the classroom. No longer does a discussion have to end when the bell rings. They can then assign students to go onto a blog and have a virtual discussion at home for homework. Teachers are assigning assessments where students are using Wikis to collaborate from their own homes on a project. It's pretty amazing what they're capable of doing now. Our classrooms have become active places of learning, where students really have become the masters of their education, and that's our role for our students.
Now, of course, we're going to tell you how wonderful we are. Several of us have taught in the district. I myself am a product of the district, but the proof is in the numbers. When you look at our high school proficiency assessment, and this is going years back, I can tell you from my own graduate coursework, when I had to dive into our state report card and pull out these numbers, we consistently outscore schools in our district factor group as well as above the state average. In the last official score reported for March 2010, the proficient and advanced proficient students in our district was 96.9% passing and well above that passing level. You see, our district factor group was only 94%. That's pretty good. And the New Jersey average was 88%, still extremely high, but Freel overall is doing it right. Our teachers have consistently scored this high with proficiency assessment. And then, with an optional test, with the SAT, unfortunately, 2011 cycle is still in progress, so we obviously don't have numbers from that, but from the 2010 testing cycle, our verbal and writing scores are, again, above the DFG average of our peer schools and above the state average. Our students are doing well.
Of course, on the last slide is over. The last slide was going to be a quote. I'll just read it to you. This comes from an employment manual, and it says, "By far, the one skill mentioned most often by employers as necessary for success is the ability to listen, write, and speak effectively. Successful communication is critical." And as our world continues to evolve into a place where collaboration is the norm, where people can work with colleagues on other continents in real time, where businesses and economies are becoming more global, despite all these radical changes, the one concept that remains, and that is necessary for success in such a world, is the ability to communicate, whether it's via Skype or a text message or God-forgotten person. The ability to accurately transfer information, to clearly send a message and properly receive it, has never been more vital, and that truly is the heart of what we do in the English department. Thank you.
On behalf of the board, we'd just like to thank you for all the hard work you do for the students in this district and for coming out tonight.
Thank you, folks. I think that one of the themes that you really touched upon, I'm sorry, as I catch you, as you're on your way out, you know, the nonfiction writing, the text analysis, the ability to, in this day and age, decipher, decode, and break down text in its various forms is a skill that's got to be ingrained, you know, all the way through the K-12 continuum. And as the district, you know, sending districts that come to us, you folks do an excellent job of making sure that we get everybody to safe and place by the time they exit the Freel overall high school district. So thank you, and have a great evening.
Just a few more items from my report. I'd like to officially welcome Nikell Williams, who started last week as the Communications Coordinator, Special Projects Coordinator. She's here somewhere this evening. She was filming earlier when Nikell came aboard on November 21st and has hit the ground running. Also, just a little feedback, we had a community relations committee meeting on November 17th of members of the public as a feedback session for some of the draft work and the strategic plan. On December 12th, we have a special board meeting where much of that work will be unveiled in its draft form. There will be a very significant web presence on our website for the public to offer comments, thoughts, feedback, and I would encourage everyone to take part in that process. We also had a terrific evening at Central State Hospital last week, where the folks over at Central State put on a welcome for the ninth-grade medical sciences students. I thought it was a terrific event. The parents were invited with the students, they were given a tour of the facility, kind of a program overview. I had to afford to speak, but Ms. Jules spoke very eloquently about the meeting of being in that program. It was a terrific evening. Also, had the good fortune to have an apple pie from the Five Star Thanksgiving. First off, it weighed about 12 ounces, and it was absolutely delicious to the point that by the time we rolled around to Saturday of Thanksgiving break, my wife was online looking at what she could order from the Five Star Cafe for the upcoming holiday break. So kudos to the folks over at the Five Star. It was absolutely fantastic. We have a meeting tomorrow, a principal's meeting, but prior to that meeting, the police chiefs from the various sending municipalities will be present to sign the upgraded memorandum agreement between the Freel overall high school district and... agreement between the Freehold Regional High School District and local law enforcement agencies, so it's a nice opportunity for us to get together in one room and talk about, you know, some of the things that we see in a school district that are unfolding, some of the changes in legislation that impact us, and to clarify some things so that we're all on the same page about how we're interpreting various statutes and things of that nature. I'd also like to highlight something that was a little out of the norm and I thought was a terrific event. Mr. Boyce and I had the opportunity to stop into some training that was taking place at Colts Neck High School. Keith Land, the principal there, we happen to be fortunate that his wife has a background with Stephen Covey and is very familiar with the seven habits of highly effective people, and she helped us out by doing an overview training of that for a couple of days with the administrative team for Colts Neck High School. And I spent about an hour there, so I didn't obviously get the benefit, but it's a book that I've read many, many times and find incredibly helpful for the day-to-day administrative tasks that we all face, so I just wanted to highlight that and thank Mr. Land for bringing that to the district. I thought it was a terrific idea. Another item, was fortunate to attend the Thanksgiving feast of Workplace Training Program over at Freehold Township the day before Thanksgiving break. You know, thank you, Miss Higley, that was a terrific event. I thought that the work that the students in that program put into that event, if you get into education and you have a day where you forget why you're there, go to that program and see what those kids do. It was tremendous. And then finally, I'd like to officially welcome John Camagno aboard this evening as our general counsel and wish him the best. Thank you.
Okay, board reports. Michael, Finance Committee?
Last Monday, the Finance Committee met, and there were two things that transpired. We had the auditors come in, and they are going to be here on December twelfth to really go into more detail. And we also talked about the energy program that we hope to soon embark on. But with respect to Suppley, Clooney, and Company, the auditors, they basically reviewed the fiscal year 2011 comprehensive annual financial report, which is what they're going to go into detail on when they come in on the twelfth. They talked about some issues that they see as needing to be fixed, so to speak. Like, for instance, one of the things that we have to develop a corrective action plan on is outstanding checks costs. You may think if somebody gets paid for either their labor or their products that they're going to be happy they got paid to cash the check, but it doesn't happen. The amount of checks outstanding is staggering, so that's something that we really need to work on. But they did say the records financially overall are in excellent condition. They talked about the status of the surplus at the end of the fiscal year. They talked about the business office staffing issues since Jason left. This is something that needs to be addressed. One of the other things we really need to do is go out and do a re-inventory of fixed assets out there, make sure all the chairs and desks are properly accounted for. And that was really the highlights of that. You'll have all the details you want on December twelfth. And then with respect to the Energy Savings Improvement Program, we put out an RFP. We're waiting to determine who's going to be hired as the energy service company. Proposals are going to be coming in, and we should really know in the next couple of weeks what the energy service companies are proposing. And we also, right now, are trying to decipher who we really want on our side of the table in this whole process, since obviously we are not energy efficiency experts in this district. We do need some people on our side of the table when we go out and are dealing with the people who are actually going to install the systems and tell us how much we could potentially save. And that's it.
Thank you, Michael. Any other board reports? Mr. Sampson has a few more announcements.
What important item? I forgot. This Saturday afternoon at Rutgers Stadium, Manalvin High School is playing Serbo High School in the state final. Manalvin is playing Serbo in the state final this Saturday afternoon at Rutgers University. Rutgers is a wonderful venue for that game if you have an opportunity to attend. They do a terrific job. They host it every year, so best to Manalvin. I learned a lesson on the power of technology when, after the state game, Mr. Marari pulled me into the field at, which was a terrific game, and just to say a few words to the team and somebody recorded it, it ended up on Wall Shore Media the next day, so it was, the power of technology was evident, and that was a great, great night. Also, it would be remiss if we didn't recognize we're accepting three retirements this evening, but we have one of those gentlemen here with us, Sam Carolla, who's the Assistant Principal here at Howe High School, has announced his retirement, and Sam knew at the start of the year that this was going to be his last year, and I'd just like to go on record as saying, Sam, we would never know that. He comes to work every day with absolute commitment to the job, is still engaged in committees and work of that nature, is always accessible, and really, you know, I said today that, you know, do we have to accept and, you know, keep you around for another twenty years, Sam? So hats off to you. Congratulations.
All right, and next we come to the Public Participation Section of the ninth. So here we come. Yes, oh, excuse me, one second.
Just a couple of comments on the agenda. There are two addendums on the back table if you haven't had a chance to look at them, and also one for board modification on page six for the paraprofessional Cordell High. It should read, underskull name, Manalvin, so that's just a correction, and again, two addendums in the back.
First up, we have a newcomer to the stage, Mr. Sage.
Thanks, Heshi. I missed the last two meetings. I watched it on video, read it in the Ask Great Press transcript, patch, and I'd like to thank you, which you haven't heard from me for a while saying this, I'd like to thank you and Carl for resolving the last dark chapter of Brier State University. It did raise some more questions than answers while I was watching it. I put an open request in. I should have received all that information on the twenty-third. I did not get it. I don't know why. So what I want to ask is, you mentioned that you wouldn't pursue retirees. What would happen if Miss Evangelista retired? Was that issue ever brought up? And also, one more question. Is there an agreement, a written agreement? Because I didn't receive it between you and Miss Evangelista, the board and Miss Evangelista.
Hi, good evening. Mr. Sage?
Yes.
I'm John Camagno. I have a feeling we're going to be chatting.
Good luck.
Yeah. It's a pleasure to meet you, sir. This is a personnel matter. We certainly recognize your right to come up and make comments and ask important questions, and I'm the newest guy off the turnip truck here in the room tonight, but I do know a little bit about the backgrounds, and unfortunately, because of the personnel nature and confidential nature of those discussions, board's really not at liberty to discuss any negotiations, discussions, whether or not any conversations happen at all along those lines. If you'd like to make any public comments, everything you've said up to this point's totally appropriate within your First Amendment rights, and the board certainly, I believe the president will welcome those, but I'm going to counsel the board not to get in any specifics.
But you said it was a personnel matter. It's already been made public already, so I'm assuming Miss Evangelista was right, therefore it was made public. So now it's not really a personnel matter anymore. It's a public matter, and it's probably a payroll information matter now because it's an agreement to pay X amount of dollars per pay period up until 2016. That's why I'm saying that this is no longer a personnel matter.
Sure. And again, sir, recognize your right, board recognizes and respects your right to make public comment about an employee. I believe your specific question went to discussions that might have happened sometime back with a specific employee. That's a personnel matter, and the board cannot answer that question.
So is my open request being denied? I didn't even receive any information whether it was denied.
We're still within the window for me to respond, which is seven business days.
Right, that should have been the twenty-third.
Actually, it's tomorrow. Tomorrow is the seventh day.
Seven, Thanksgiving. All right, thanks.
Okay, well, the next person knows who she is, so she's coming up there already. We have Helen.
Good evening, Helen Hockberg-Malbrae. Tonight, I am truly hopeful to finally get an answer to my question that I have been asking since June, Mr. Sampson or the newly-appointed board attorney. Can you tell the public what is the outcome from the judge's decision on the reimbursement of the $247,000 of legal fees incurred in the Bonnie Sue Rosenwald litigation? And my second comment would be, on page eleven, there is a stipend that is going to be discussed for an administrative supervisor. In the hundreds of meetings that I have been to, stipends have always been given to teachers and not to administrative support personnel. So my question is, why at this time are we giving stipends to people beyond the teachers? I respect your decision.
Yeah, I'll take both of those. The first question, you're not going to be happy to, in response, is, we did speak with Mr. Edelstein today. If you recall, he left us with the cliffhanger, the mic. Can anybody hear me back there? It's, I think it's the front. I think there's a problem right here, because everybody can hear me in the back, and I can hear me. Regardless, there is no rendering of a judge's decision yet on your first question. That's what Mr. Edelstein said just this evening. To the second question, that stipend is viewed as a standalone one-year for the strategic plan, and it's an absolute anomaly with the amount of work that that individual is going to be engaged in for that stipend. So that was where that emerges from, and it's in no way precedent-setting or anything along those lines, but it's in keeping with the massive amount of work that's going to go into facilitating that process over the course of this year. It's a one-year-only stipend.
Okay, next up, we have Ms. Gloria. G-L-O-R-A-N.
Good evening. To the new lawyer sitting there, kind of shot into here about your stating that the whole issue about Miss Evangelista is now becoming personal and closed, you know, that cannot be discussed, when it has been discussed for so many years. Okay? Miss Evangelista is now being asked to pay back the district $5,400 payable until 2016. This payment arrangement is totally unacceptable. I'd like to also know, I'd like to know how you come up with a $5,400 total. Now, I have questions to clarify, though it's been going on for more than three and a half years. The five who are part of the Brier State University received $2,500 yearly adjustment for the doctorate title. When Mr. Sage wrote his Brier State University debacle in July, how many years was Miss Evangelista being paid for for the doctorate title? The district paid $8,700 in tuition to Brier State University as reported in the paper. Was it for the five involved employees, or was it just for Miss Evangelista? We all know that Tally Graff sued the district, and we have to wait. How about Ms. Cheryl Lanza, who is currently in her teaching staff? Does she owe the district money? She's one of the five who got the questionable doctorate. Miss Evangelista is receiving $151,556 in salary. The adjustment of $2,500 to her getting her doctorate was remitted to her immediately, and her tuition was even prepaid by the board, which was not the normal procedure. Isn't it an insult to the taxpayers to wait five years to get paid back when in fact the county superintendent already took the doctorate away so long ago? Now the state controller vindicated that the doctorate was bogus and suggested that the district should be paid back. It is just with common decency that the money should be paid back to the district as soon as possible. Yes, Mr. Moses, we were willing to move on for so long ago for the sake of the students and this district. We were waiting for the employees involved to admit that their doctorate was fraud and requested that they pay back the district for all the money paid to them. They refused and dragged on for over three and a half years, and now, yes, we're willing to move on from this issue completely, but at the same token, the district must be paid immediately. On the, Mr. Moore, Mr. Sampson, that was a volunteer position. When that committee and the other committees were open to the public, we owe, the district owes us a list of volunteers, both from the public and from the administration. In this particular committee, the one that you have, I believe that is what you call, no, wait a second, Community Relations Committee, you have forty-five members, forty-five volunteers full of different ideas, intellectual people, and then why do we have to select one to lead a group? Normally, in a committee, you have all the discussions, all the meetings that you have, because I used to do a lot of separate committees, also not from this, but from the past. You have discussions, okay? And then when you come up with recommendations, that goes to the board for final approval. But I'm really surprised to read that a member of the administrator, administration, Mr. Moore, is being recommended by Mr. Sampson to get paid stipend. Like Mr. Hockford said, that is not, as far as I remember, members of the administration are not eligible to apply for stipends, not to receive stipends, correct or wrong? It is my understanding that only teaching staff can apply for stipends. Now, Mr. Sampson, you are now setting a new precedent again, that the administrator can apply from now on for stipends. Why'd you start this? We know the trend of this district. Let's follow the leader.
Since I am the leader, Ms. Close, and I say it's not being a precedent, and it's not going to set any precedent, it's a standalone anomaly, I don't think I'm worried about it being a precedent, and that's all I'm going to say on it. It's well deserved. The Community Relations Committee that you're speaking about is a volunteer committee that is providing parallel feedback to the steering committee as we go to the plan itself, the mission, the draft, mission statement, strategies, and so forth from the strategic plan. Mr. Moore is facilitating that whole process in an internal capacity. The position was posted in the district, and the honest truth is that in what we're requiring of that facilitator, Mr. Moore's capabilities are uniquely situated to deliver that product.
I'm not questioning, okay, his ability, Mr. Sampson, but when that position was offered to the public, it was purely on the volunteer position.
This position was never offered to the public, Ms. Close. You're confusing the Community Relations Committee.
Budget is approaching, okay? And being generous like that might punch back comes election, comes budget time. Also, last one, I'm requesting from this board and from the administration to please dedicate that special night or nights for all those accomplished athletes and other students who are after awards and their long ones. Remember, you always, in sports night, the award, we have all the children here and their parents.
December nineteenth.
I understand that. I have been requesting the board to please dedicate that one special night for those athletes who accomplish a lot and for those other students that are after awards, because that is a night for them and their parents.
It's a night to celebrate the accomplishments of this whole district, which is part of It's a night to celebrate the accomplishments of this whole district, which is part and parcel of what a board of education meeting is, Ms. Close. It's not simply the public participation part. That's one component to a board meeting. The board meeting, if we're not sitting here celebrating student achievement at a board meeting, I think we've lost our focus a little bit.
But I don't think that... Right. That's...
That's why we added the 12th, so to break it up, Ms. Close, so that it is giving up for two meetings.
Yeah, but you know, Mr. Sampson, you're still making students, okay? What I'm trying to say is just dedicate a night for them and the parents, because that is such a special night for those people, separated from the board, okay? From the, well, that's what I'm trying to say now. The last two years, the sports award took place right on the final budget presentation and believing internally, so clear. Okay? And I, we couldn't understand anything because the promotion was unbelievable. That was so important for us that night.
I'm sure Mr. Kamegno is going to tell me to shut up, but I have to say something. Gloria, I, you have the absolute right to, to say how you feel about things, but I gotta tell you, I'm hurt personally that I thought that this was over now, that we're getting the money back, that, that it would be closed, but you still find like the fly in the ointment. And I don't know if we would ever be able to satisfy you. This was something that was done, let me finish, because I let you talk, I didn't interrupt you. I, we went to the state, the state told us that we could not demand the money back, that we could ask for the money back. The whole board agreed with the two of us that went, Carl, myself, was unanimous. We asked, Ms. Evangelista agreed to pay the money back, which she didn't have to pay back according to the state. Now, I don't make the state rules. I'm not telling you whether I agree or disagree with the state rules. I'm just telling you the facts. We're getting the money back. I thought that this, this situation, this conversation was at an end, but tonight, once again, you bring it up, and I don't understand what, if ever, is going to satisfy you about this unless you want us to break the law of the state of New Jersey, which I'm not going to do, nor is anyone on this board going to do to satisfy you. So...
He was just totally a monster to us. $5,400 and a person who's getting paid $155,000, you're going to make it payable for six years. More said as much on our faces. That's all. I just wanted to move on, so it was three years ago. If that was addressed properly. But even the lawyer said, would that be the, the county superintendent and the people involved in that, how many pretend, you were part of that?
I was part of what?
No, you were part of the board members there. What we were just asking is, say the story of what you did and pay back the district and let's move on. But they didn't. They went on and on and on and on. Do you think we liked it, Mr. Moore? Most, no, we don't.
Do you think I liked it?
Precisely. So let's end it, make her pay the district as soon as possible.
Okay, okay.
That's all.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, we have Leon.
Leon Sorelick, Leon Sorelick, Van Alvin. First, I would like to thank Mr. Sampson for his refreshing honesty in recognizing the ongoing problems in the schools in regard to the violence and the drugs and all the other stuff, because far too often, those problems were swept under the rug in the past, and it was refreshing to see it honestly discussed. And since it's all, it's been brought up in the open, the way in the framework that we're talking about it now, I wanted to revisit some of what was talked about at the last meeting also. And it's not just Gloria, and it's not just Heshi, I mean, it's not just Jim Sage. You had, Heshi, you had asked us and made the comment to me also following some statements that I made, that you wanted all in the past. Why am I always bringing back the Brier State stuff? And it's the old story, it's not over until it's over. And you made the, you made the statement at the last meeting, in your mind, it's over, and we all applauded, but after the fact, when we got home and we had the time to think about what was said, it was a very unsatisfying resolution to this situation, because you're asking somebody who is earning over $150,000 to pay back $5,400 or $5,600 in a period of five or six years, five years. And it reminded me of an incident that I had several years ago when I took a contract in a small claims court, and the settlement was he was going to pay me back $680. You know what he did? He sent me back a $5 check every month, and that's what it sounds like this is going to be. It doesn't seem like it's a penalty to Ms. Evangelista, and it doesn't sound like a satisfactory response for us, and it doesn't sound like a satisfactory reply for all the stuff that we've been through for the past three years to the board. That, and so you might think it's, it's in the past, but the way it was resolved is unsatisfactorily to us, okay? That's finished, I made that comment. The other thing, I had a very interesting conversation with a friend of mine on Saturday who happens to be an administrator in another school district. And in the past, I've talked to him about various things that have gone on here. And now, I don't know whether it's a statewide process that, that he had to go through, but he, with a chuckle, he laughed and he said, you know, we had to do, we had to go back over all the academic credentials of the teachers, the supervisors, and the administrators in their district. And when that came up, he says, we were the first ones that he thought of because of what we accomplished by the same core group that, that has been here for the past three years fighting what we consider the good fight and all the stuff that we accomplished. And that was why I wanted to revisit it and just, and bring up the fact that we find it unsatisfactorily the way it was resolved. Now, the last item that I want to bring up about what occurred last week was the issue of, of the bullying and harassment to Mrs. Close. Now, the board said that they can't make a statement. Maybe there was a misunderstanding. Gloria was not asking the board to take any official action. All she was asking the board to do was to make a general statement against bullying of anybody that gets up to speak. Nobody's name was supposed to be mentioned. Nobody was asking for any specifics, but for all the time that we've put in, in this district, fighting the good fight and standing up here and coming to these meetings, almost, almost never missing one, for the past three years, and my friend also made the same comment, the same four people come to their meetings all the time. If, if it wasn't for a sports event, nobody would come. So I, I, I think as a courtesy and out of respect to us and to Gloria, who fights the good fight, whether some people like it or not, she's been told oftentimes by various people on the board that they listen to what she says, it's important, it's taken into account, and she deserves the respect of this board to have some kind of a statement, just honoring the time that she puts in, say something to the fact that bullying is not an acceptable process to anybody that puts in the time to come up to speak. That's all. She wasn't asking for a specific legal statement or, or, or action. And, and that's all. I mean, it was, I think the board was remiss in, in losing that opportunity to speak up.
I think the film, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I'm almost positive we said that it would never be tolerated in a meeting year for anyone to be bullied if they got up and spoke. And I, I, I think that's what we said. And the other thing about making the big deal about the $5,400 or whatever, I just want to let you know, Gloria, that $5,400 buys a lot of state championship rings, and it's not a little small amount to me when, when I realize what I had to do to get that money to buy those kids those rings. So I'm glad that we're getting $5,400 back. Okay, next, we have, we have a team, Robin and Robert. You want to come up separately or together? Okay. Robin and Robert Keller, real attention.
As you know, we don't want to be here tonight. We have tried everything to avoid this. It's a situation, we have worked with administration and council for 40 days. We need to know that the board understands what we've gone through as well and what you will continue to go through, a time-consuming and very costly and not needed litigation starting tomorrow.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
I apologize for interrupting. It's a terrible habit we attorneys have.
Yes.
I understand, although I'm not familiar...
Correct.
...directly with your matter because prior council, council was working on it.
Yes.
But I understand you're represented by council and you have a child represented by council.
Correct.
I want to caution you, because you're represented by council, sometimes it's not a good idea to come out and speak publicly about a matter when you have councils speaking on your behalf. Also, so whether or not you speak, that's up to you, all right? If, if this is a matter involving a child and you want to talk about your child, any facts, et cetera, I want to caution you against that as well. We as a board, the administration, cannot respond, can't talk about a specific child because of student confidentiality. I want to caution you against that as well, all right?
My student was, my son was suspended and placed on home instruction, which, as you know, has been very limited and not met the legal minimums according to board policy and state statute. He has been denied due process. He is only 15. He was interrogated without parental consent. The district has violated all board policy. The district has violated the state law, so perhaps not in the case that you were previously talking about, did you break state law, but you have now broke state law. The district has failed to provide any information to us in writing, and as a student with IEP, the district has violated his rights under IDEA. We have hired counsel, as you are aware, tried to remediate this situation. We begged to have it heard. We begged for a hearing with the superintendent, which we did receive after 29 days, not the required 21. We now have been forced to file a petition with the education commissioner for emergent relief. All of this is based upon a one person's personal interpretation of a personal communication between my son and another student. My son's removal also from the ROTC is based upon the personal discretion of the building supervisor who decides who remains and who is removed after a disciplinary action. Of course, you know, we challenged both the actions and the suspension, the severity of it and the charges, as well as the discretionary removal from the program. Dr. Hazel, on 10/26, you had advised that all suspensions and/or disciplinary actions would result in removal from any of the academy and learning center programs. We challenged that as we were well aware of other students who have been suspended and remain in the program. On 11/15, Dr. Hazel, you reinterpreted the contract to allow that the principal of the building that the, where the learning center or academy is located has the personal discretion to remove or decide which student may remain or be removed. Additionally, this contract is interpreted, I was told by counsel, to suit the position of your needs. I was also advised by the district that the contract, which we saw when our son was in the eighth grade, waived all rights under board policy, also state law as well as federal law, which of course, we did not waive all of our rights at the door when we entered high school. All we want for our son is to be returned to school, to the program that he belongs to, and we beg you to provide him the education he deserves and follow the law and please to stop abusing our son. That's all we would like to contact.
Mr. and Mrs. Keller, thank you. Again, I can't speak about it, okay? So I do understand council's involved, both representing the board and representing your family. I would assume, knowing Dr. Hazel is a fine administrator, special educator, that any direction she gave you was with the assistance of council, consistent with district policy. And I will also say that the district remains committed to accommodating your challenge of best interest and certainly is hopeful that this matter is resolved quickly.
Because we just don't understand why the board would allow this to go to court, to expose the corrupts that occur, to expose the gross negligence and incompetence that has been displayed, and lastly, the true lack of concern that has been shown to our child. The reason we are really here is it should not happen to our child, it should not happen to any child, and that's why we are coming through this. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the agenda. That would be items H1 through L1. I'm going to ask that we take the entire agenda as one, and then I have another motion that I would like to make, because I know that there are some concerns on the board. So... We're going to move the whole agenda? Okay, so can we have a motion? Okay, Jen takes the motion. Second? Bill seconds it. Okay, I would like to make a motion to separate H2, okay, from the, the rest of the agenda. Give people on the board a chance. I need a first and a second. The discussion at this point is on whether or not to separate H2. So that becomes a subordinate motion, then the rest of the agenda is handled, then we go to H2. So the motion on the floor is to separate H2. Mr. Asatola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Mazik?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Okay, now we return to the balance of the original motion, which includes the entire agenda with the exception of H2. And we're on the discussion floor. Discussion?
Seeing none.
Mr. Asatola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes, everything except L1, I will, I am present and voting on everyone except for Jeanette Bruno.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Mazik?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Now, we're back to H2?
Yes.
Okay, discussion on H2. New motion for H2? Jen? Second. Bill second. Now, we have discussion on H2?
I'd like to say something. In all my time as a board member, Heshi, and members of the public, this is perhaps my most difficult decision. I've had the pleasure of working with Jeff Moore on numerous...
Different...
...tasks, and I find him to be extremely competent. He is a dedicated person, puts forth 110% in everything he does, but when it comes to this additional stipend, I cannot vote to approve it. I truly appreciate all his work, but I'm afraid of the problems created by approving a stipend in these very hard economic times. And I do know that he puts many additional hours, and he's been requested to put many additional hours into this particular task, but my problem is solely with the economics of this and certainly not in the job performance of Mr. Moore, nor is it in endorsing, in lack of endorsing anything for Mr. Sampson. We just clearly have a difference in philosophy and, and the approach under strategic plan. And that concludes my comment on the stipend portion.
Very well said, I agree. The board is charged and will get a big picture. And while Mr. Sampson has said that this isn't going to set precedence for anything, I can still see it being used to justify future stipends for administrators and the additional work that they do. justify, uh, future stipends for administrators and the additional work that they do. Um, I'm not going to be voting for this statement, but again, as Mr. Acetola has said, uh, I fully support the work that administrators do, and I recognize that they go above and beyond every single day. I just don't see at this time, this being the best decision for a district.
Any other discussion? Well, I'm gonna say something. Um, I know Jeff Moore, I know about the amount of work he has to do on this, it's a five-year plan, um, the amount that is being offered is less, and I hope Alex doesn't take, uh, exception to this, is actually less than some JV coaches make for one season. So, um, if Mr. Sampson says that it is a one-time thing, um, and he is a superintendent, and I have faith in him, that it's not going to be setting a precedent, then I am for it.
I have something to say also. Um, I wasn't for his stipend, but I am on the committee, and it is a lot of work for him to do, um, and he was asked to do it, um, he, um, didn't volunteer, um, and it is a five-year plan, and we went out of our way to hire Mr. Sampson, and, um, I know that I made the right choice when we hired him, and so I'm gonna go with his judgment and giving him the stipend right now, and I'm for it also.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Voice?
Mr. Acetola? Everything on H two with the exception of the stipend for Jeff Moore.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes, on everything.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes, but, uh, no on the stipend.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Mazik?
Yes, on everything except for the approval of strategic planning coordinator for the twenty-eleven, twenty-eleven school year.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Motion passes. Motion passes. Excuse me?
No, 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 he's not. That's not in for long.
Okay. And, old business? None. And new business?
Mr. President, may I, uh, address the issue of a potential conflict? Here's some, here's some chatter in the audience, and I just want to note for the record that I did discuss this issue with Mr. Bruno and the administration briefly before the meeting, uh, and it's, uh, my opinion, in light of the fact that this is not negotiations, this is a standalone, uh, stipend position, which does not arise from C B A, does not arise in filling a stipending position in a guide, there is no issue of chain of command involving, uh, the employee, uh, that Mr. Bruno has a potential conflict with, with this employee, that there is no conflict in him casting a vote on this.
Thank you, Mr. Voice. Okay, and, Mr. Voice?
Yes, um, and one is, uh, a motion that's not included in your agenda. Um, it is regarding the Board of Education and District Goals, uh, and it reads, motion to adopt following resolution, resolve that the following board and district goals be adopted for the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve year. Board of Education Goals, number one, support student achievement through the development of a strategic plan. I'm sorry, support the improvement of student achievement. Pursue fiscally sustainable collective bargaining agreements that balance student needs and district responsibilities. That's number two, and number three is increase effective communication with, with the internal and external school community. The district goals, uh, number one, develop a multi-year strategic plan that contains goal strategies and the annual benchmarks to improve student achievement, and number two is improve consistency in district operations while actively embracing the unique attributes Uh, this will be, of course, posted on the website following the meeting.
We need a motion on, uh, and? A motion? Okay. Seeing none, Mr. Voice?
Mr. Acetola? Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Mazik?
Yes.
Mr. Moses? Okay, that brings us to the end of the meeting. Thank you all for coming tonight, and we need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
That was unanimous.